Welcome to the first in-person Twalton City Council meeting in quite a while. Welcome all those here in the audience. It's weird not being in Hollywood Squares and actually seeing real people here. So, thank you for attending tonight. First item tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Brooks. We actually stand up and look at the flag. This is weird.
Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the symbol of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So next up, we have Council Brooks again with the public health announcement.
So I just wanted to give an update on public health. So there are new advances being made in vaccines. As many people might already know, they're adding RNA research. They will be adding RNA to Moderna and Pfizer vaccines. And as it's, sorry, scroll down, as it is, so I just want to read a little piece. Pfizer and Moderna are updating their COVID-19 vaccines to target the highly contagious and predominant Omicron BA4 and BA5 subvariants, which we've all heard about. So the good news is we have vaccines. I remember back in the time when this first started and there were the mass graves that were being dug in New York City, and we don't have those things going on right now, but we do have contagion around these variants, and we want to be really careful and we want to protect ourselves with vaccines. And the vaccines may be available to the public by early fall, so keep your eye out for that. The federal government announced plans last week in order to order 171 million doses of these updated vaccines, a mere few months after the U.S. Food and Drug Administration recommended Pfizer and Moderna include a BA4, BA5 component in future COVID-19 vaccines. These companies make vaccines using mRNA technology, a process that allows for quick vaccine development and even quicker updates to the formula. We take a look behind this, I'm not going to talk about that. So that's happening. The other thing that was good on this update is thinking about putting on your checklist, if you have kids going back to school, getting their vaccines updated for when you take your kids back to school. All there's all the centers with a lot of vaccines available and testing and treatment now that we used to not have. So look at the OH, the Oregon Health Authority website, and to get updates on the vaccines, you can get updates every week and learn more about what's happening. And it's all comes right from the Public Health Authority, and we've all gone through this together where it's a moving target that we're dealing with. So there's updates and information coming out all the time. And to look at the Oregon Health Authority is a really good way of just staying clear of confusion, being updated and taking care of yourselves, your neighbors and your family and your loved ones. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mike McCarthy with new employee introduction. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Buick and members of the City Council. My name is Mike McCarthy. I'm the interim city engineer here in Twalton. And it's my pleasure to introduce newest member of the engineering division of the Community Development Department. This is Joseph Lau. And Joseph's our new engineering technician. He started here in Twalton June 27. Joseph comes to us from Sioux Falls, South Dakota, by way of the United States Army, including a recent deployment in Guantanamo Bay, Cuba. He's also still active in the reserves. And he brings in a lot of knowledge, skills and abilities that we're really excited about, particularly in construction supervision, inspection, project management. So as one of their engineering technicians, Joseph will be helping us out with like inspecting construction sites, like a lot of private developer work, issuing permits for franchise utilities, working in the public light of way, and helping manage construction projects. And I know you joined me welcoming Joseph to Twalton.
Welcome. Thank you. Anything you want to say or? I feel you're not going to be bored in this town. You know that. Probably you've been here enough, long enough to see this. It's a pretty active community with a lot of development going on, lots of inspections on instruction. So I welcome you here to the city and, you know, best of luck. I think like I said, you're not going to be bored. You're never, I think you'll be busy all the time, so welcome.
Thank you.
Glad you're here. Thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Should we do the gong again? Why are we still got the semi-gong? Mr. Hudson, you're up next with another employee introduction.
Mayor Buick and members of the council. My name is Don Hudson. I'm the assistant city manager here at the city of Twalton. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce you to our newest member of our finance department. This is Jennifer Matthews. She's our new payroll technician. She reports to Matt, who are our assistant finance director. And she started with the city on July 11th, so just about a month. She comes to us from Espadas, California, and with a great combination of knowledge, skills and abilities to just brought right into this position. We were really excited when she applied because not only does she have eight years of payroll experience, but she's also got eight years of payroll experience using the same software system that we use. So she was able to, in a lot of ways, step right in. As our payroll technician, she will be responsible for pay staff every other week, which makes her very popular every week, but the other week. The process involves everything from when the timesheets get entered all the way through the biweekly payroll, sending everything to the banks, and then through the state and federal payroll taxes, getting those paid. She's a contact for employees when they have questions or if they want to make changes to their withholdings or their deferred compensation contributions. So I'd really like you to join me in welcoming Jennifer, not only to the finance team, but to the city of Twalton as well.
Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Anything you'd like to say to her?
Just thank you very much for having me here tonight. It's nice to meet you all. I've really enjoyed working here with the city of Twalton. Everyone's been so welcoming and kind and helpful, so I look forward to working with all of you. Sure.
Was it warm in California like it has been here or?
Yes, I think we might have brought heat with us. They had followed us, unfortunately. We thought we were getting away from it, but.
That's what everybody thinks, yeah. You know, climate change, not so much, but welcome and best wishes and I wish you the best here in the city.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Allison.
Nice to meet you all.
All right, that brings us to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the city regarding the council, regarding items not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments for about three minutes. We've got the clock back, which we didn't have.
Well, we had the clock.
It's going to take us three minutes.
Just a few good old Zoom media, just in time. All right, we don't have to worry about it. We don't see how much we've got public here right now. Please keep your comments for about three minutes. If there's anyone here in the meeting or like you're just the council or in the Zoom session, this would be the appropriate time. Usually, we still doing the slips to Nicole while she's multitasking.
Yes, because they're out on the table.
Okay. All right, so you're not wearing anybody a public cabinet in person? And no one in the Zoom meeting? So we're good? All right. That brings us to consent agenda. These are items that are considered a routine. It was adopted by one motion, as someone that council would like it removed separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of four items. Item number one, consideration of approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of July 11, 2022. Consideration of resolution number 5637-22, authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment, the grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the Oregon Community Path Program. Item number three, consideration of resolution number 5638-22, warrant the contract for construction of the booster quarter sidewalk and bike lane improvements phase one project, part of the Twalton Moving Forward Program, which starts earlier than tonight. And item number four, consideration of resolution number 5639-22, award in the contract for construction of the 65th Avenue near Meridian Park Hospital Crosswalk Project, another part of the Twalton Moving Forward Program. We're going to cancel that item removed from consent and heard later tonight. Okay, the motion is second to approve the consent agenda. Has read any questions or discussion on the motions? This is not going to be the best part, not being on Zoom. All those in favor say aye. Or opposed. It's unanimous. No more roll calls for this kind of stuff. This is great. That brings us to general business and item number one, consideration of resolution number 5636-22, call and measure elections to submit the electors of the city. What? We start over again. Yeah, that's a big one. Consideration of resolution number 5636-22, call and measure election to submit to the electors of the city the question of authorizing up to $25 million in general obligation bonds for trails, parks and river access, declaring intent to reimburse expenditures and related matters. Welcome, Ross.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. A lot of legal ease. Thank you for, this is really a return of the topic that we've been discussing. It's been an ongoing conversation. And I'll see where the, we'll get the PowerPoint up here quickly and walk through a few slides for you. Refresh the memory.
Okay, Sherlock. We're pointed this way.
That's right. So as you, as you mentioned there, resolution 5636-22, in considering putting on the, on the November 22 ballot, a, a parks bond in the amount of $25 million to fund a number of different projects, as you see here, going to skip, going to skip to this slide, because this is in, you've seen this before in previous packets. This is really the, the why behind what this is all about. These on your left are very abbreviated versions of your council goal, vision items. These really, really guided our community as we dove into the Parks and Recreation System Plan Master Plan Update, guided our Twalton Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee as they prioritize projects from that master plan. And, and, and then guided our stakeholder advisory committee, some of whom are here in person and some who are on Zoom tonight, really guided the work and, and, and asked and answered the question, why are we, why are we focused on, why are we doing this work? And it's about those, those vision items on the left column. So I just wanted to point that out. These are, you can see the projects, the project areas along the top, focused on how we can accomplish, how we can bring these goals, this vision for our community to reality. And so these projects are, are the investment areas that our advisory committee is, has come up with. And so this, this bond that you'll consider tonight is, it would put it on the ballot for voters to consider in November and would make investments in these areas to very specifically targeted towards manifesting those, those council goals. So happy to answer any questions you might have still. We can, as you, as you're aware, it's also in your packet, the rate at which this, this would, this shows up in the, in the resolution. And also the timeline is also in your packet, so you can see where we're at and where we'll be if you choose to proceed and adopt this resolution with, with Election Day culminating Election Day on November 8. Happy to answer any questions and, or walk through any detail that you might like me to.
Question for Ross. Oh, okay.
I move to consider resolution number 5636-22, calling a measure election to submit the electors of the city of, the city, the question of authorizing up to $25 million of general obligation bonds for trails, parks and river access, declaring intent to reimburse expenditures and related measures.
I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 5636-22, calling a measure election to submit to the electors of the city the question of authorizing up to $25 million of general obligation bonds for trails, parks and river access, declaring intent to reimburse expenditures and related matters. Any discussions on the motions? This one is a roll call, so Council Hillary.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Ray.
Yes.
Council Sacco.
Aye.
Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council President Grimes.
Aye.
I vote aye also. It's unanimous. Go forth for us.
Thank you for all the hard work. This was a long process. Thank you very much.
I came on council and so grateful for all the hard work that you put in and the T-Park committee. Thank you immensely for coming tonight.
Yeah, the committee said excellent work.
Excellent, excellent work. I'm looking forward to campaigning.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item number two, consideration of resolution of 5635-22, accepting to see a Twalton Veterans Plaza Plan and Design Report.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So Rich Mueller, Park Planning and Development Manager, and Nate, I can't pronounce your last name, sorry. Otani from Spear Did Way. So we have, we have this particular item, you've also seen several times, we, as staff and consultant team, and Rich Mueller as a project manager for this project, have, have, I've had on with our community a really extensive conversation about imagining what a city of Twalton Veterans Plaza looks like, what it feels like, what it acts like. And we're going to talk, we'll go through this, this stack. This is a PowerPoint deck that you've seen previously. But wanted to go through it in case you had any clarifying questions that we would, we would be happy to answer any of those, those tonight. So we'll, we'll pass this to whoever's presenting.
All right.
Nate kicks it off.
Well, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here and present. It's nice to see some familiar faces and nice to be, welcome to one of the first in-person meetings, sounds like in quite some time, so. We'll start off with a little overview of the process. This process began in October of 2019. That was phase one, where we focused our efforts as a team on community engagement and community outreach to really help develop the core themes and objectives of this project, as well as site location and designing program. From there, phase two began in October of 2021, where we continued our public engagement and public outreach efforts, as well as took feedback to help develop design concepts and a preferred alternative plan. And that is continuing through now. So recap on the phase one community engagement. We had over 900 community members and they participated in 20 involvement opportunities, which had five focus groups. It had outreach events. They had a stakeholders committee with nine of 16 members being veterans. There was two community engagement events, and we also had three surveys that had over 688 responses. And we also, all the documentation that we developed for these outreach efforts were released in both English and Spanish for a more inclusive approach. The plan was endorsed by stakeholders, the stakeholder committee, it was recommended by T-Park, and it was accepted by city council. So like I said, part of the outreach project process was to determine who and what the project should honor, but also determine the key themes and objectives. The key themes being honor, connection, engagement, experience, shared values and timeless. It was also determined through this outreach effort what the project is and what it is not. The plaza should be a place that focuses on service, honor, recognition. It's an inclusive space. It's welcoming to all. It should not overemphasize war or violence. It should not reference specific conflicts or people, and it should not be overwhelming, inundated with information. So after we have our key themes and objectives covered all up, the next step in the process was site selection. There was originally eight sites kind of analyzed. Of those eight sites, that was refined down to three sites, where the preferred site was selected, which is the Twalton Commons. From there, with the site and key themes and objectives, this allowed us to understand the space and start to develop a design program. This is where we kind of developed the, the city, the people, developed the qualitative aspects of the project, where the parameters on size and use, such as gathering spaces for 30 to 50 people, intimate passive spaces, spaces for solitude, spaces for personal storytelling, recreation spaces and active spaces, a dedication area, interpretive elements such as signage and art, adjacency to parking and also close proximity to public transportation. So that was kind of where phase one stopped and where phase two has begun. Phase two, we continue to have extensive outreach and community engagement efforts with community and local veterans to kind of develop more of the qualitative aspects of the, of the project. And that was kind of, that is developed in a needs assessment, and those needs assessments are the needs that the community expressed physically manifested on site. And so through that, we developed three concepts that reflected what the community needs were. Of these three design options, design option number three was selected through virtual open house and survey. I'll pass it off to Rich at this point to describe some of the more of the metrics of the community outreach and engagement.
Thank you, Nate. You're, what you're seeing here is the results of the first survey. And so I think what we want to share here is 70% of the folks in the first survey, 80% of the people in the second survey were veterans or, or family members of veterans. Eight, basically 90% of both first and second survey for phase two were Twalton residents or employed within Twalton. And I think the general results showed us about 95% positive and supportive comments. And about 5% of folks had constructive criticism and, and different ideas. On the preferred design, option three and option one really prevailed. And so the consultants took those two options and pulled the pieces out of them that people commented on the most and supported and put them into the preferred design, which Nate will share here in a few minutes. As for the name, we, we kept hearing comments about the name. We, different veterans organizations and different veterans had different feelings on the name. And so we asked people what they thought the name would be. And really, phase one and then phase two informed us that Veterans Plaza, this, this wasn't truly a memorial that was honoring folks that had passed. This was for veterans that passed and veterans that are with us today. And so really, the inclusiveness, we, we again heard different things from different veterans, veterans groups and committee member or community members. It, it really, the, the phases up to this point in the project informed this is the appropriate name. And, and that's, that's what we advanced. Specifically, there was heavy outreach to veterans organizations, and I think that, you know, 70, over 70% and then 80% in phase two, you know, showed that veterans had heavy involvement in the pro, in the project. Want to just quickly review phase two, community engagement with you. You can see the numbers here. So what I'll give you is the total, the, the total engagement for both phase one and phase two, 1,500 and 50 people participated. And there were 40 different opportunities to participate during those two phases. And, and really, that's what informed the preferred design, again, which, which Nate will, Nate will share with you here in a minute. And we'll spend a lot of time on community outreach, but you know, Kylan, our team, social, print, online presence, just really thousands of different notifications and pieces of information went out to give people the opportunity to participate in this project. Ross is going to take this next slide.
Yeah, this is, this is, can I borrow this for a second? Thanks. I just wanted to, feedback and concerns, robust engagement, quality, high-quality engagement that results in high-quality outcomes and designs require good debate about what this looks like and how it acts. And, and so we, we heard our concerns and, and we've talked about these previously, but I just wanted to go back to this slide because of the images. And, and we have an amazingly passionate group of veterans in our community who really care about recognizing those who have served. And, and you, and you can see in this that we heard, we heard from our community members and those who have served. And the result was, is a, is a really high-quality product. It's going to recognize all veterans. And I know some of you in this image are, are watching from home right now or participating on Zoom. So thank you for participating in this process.
Yeah, just to echo Ross's sentiments, that there was a community needs assessment that, and that was basically us just helping process all the feedback the community provided, local veterans groups and other community members. So that's what we've heard from them, what this space needed was it needed a space that had visual entry areas, gathering spaces, shaded area, intimate group spaces, benches and tables, QR codes for access to information, places for storytelling, connectivity to the, the access around the lake, active areas, a water feature, public art was very important, selection of natural materials and native vegetation, and that the space is simple, intentional and a very inclusive space. So with that information and also the additional information that was provided through the feedback and concerns, a preferred design alternative was developed. And this space kind of represents some of the components of design option three, with some of the component options of design option one, as well as all these encompassing public feedback and comment. And with that, we have a space that has welcome signage, public art, there'll be selected through a public selection process, a dedication area, a large central gathering spaces that's flexible for different sizes and groups. With that, the, the preferred design also provided the opportunity for sleaze, for flags, for potential flexibility, different groups and different events to have their own, their own moment out there and their own flag use. Various types of seating, shaded area, synthetic turf area for activity, native evergreen trees, native ground covers and understory, as well as flowering cherries for seasonality. There's also integrated throughout the site is QR codes for access to integration at both the central core area and the entry nodes. Speaking to the entry nodes, it was really important that we heard from the people that in the community, that having those that bring people into the site and kind of create an icon and a destination to wave find into the center core space. So at Seneca Street, this space will have string lighting. It'll have papers with military information that people can contribute to. It'll have service-inspired art. It'll have the QR codes as mentioned, and it'll also have welcome signage. The entry node at Nyberg Street, we will have a, a nice labyrinth with different paving materials to kind of create that space, benches for seating, native trees and vegetation, light components that flow you through the site. This is all feedback that was just processed that we received through. This is all feedback that was just processed that we received through the community. So it's been a very great opportunity to be a part of this and see such an involved community. So thank you for that.
The next steps of the project include tonight, council consideration of acceptance. Tea Park at the last meeting does recommend council accept the plan and design and construction documents, which are funded in this fiscal year's budget, and then construction funding. With that, we hand it back to you for any questions or discussion.
So do we have Major Nicole Public who would like to comment on this resolution? And then I'll get to questions. Here's your chance. Hey, Mr. Shabbat, how are you? You're muted.
Can I try it again? Okay. Can I make some comments now? Okay, thank you for having this presentation of that availability, if you will. Having a Veterans Memorial would be something that would be great for the veterans and also for the city. I'd like to speak on two things, one is labeling and another one on symbolism. As far as labeling is concerned, I know Tuolton is trying to become a tourist destination with their Art Walk and the Ice Age Trail, and now with the Veterans Memorial Plaza ATC meeting at the Commons. That would be another drawing card as far as people are looking to see what's available here and they'd like to come see that. Now, the name Veterans Plaza lacks definition as far as name goes. A memorial means commitment and will draw more interest to the area. Now, into symbolism, I'd like to talk about the flags. The flag, Oh Glory, on a pole that you have in your sample there with the MIA, POW MIA flag on it. It's a singular pole and it's a flag like you see at the post office or courthouse or other government place. And it really doesn't have any special significance in this case. Now, if you surround that flag with the Hall of Flags, one from each service branch gathered around Oh Glory symbolizes the support the services together give to our country, symbolizes by Oh Glory the support needed and actively given by all service members to keep Oh Glory flying and in, to ensure our free way of life. These free flying flags symbolizes our freedoms by their presence. All veterans will flying with Oh Glory and support. All other Blanche flags also. Now, especially at night, if you can imagine, these are lighted at night, seeing Oh Glory flying out there with the POW MIA flag on the same pole and all the service branch flags flying around it. If you're standing on the east, the correction, on the west side of the Commons Lake, looking across the water and you see all those flags flying that are lighted at night, that'll be a sight to see. And I'm sure that the veterans that would be proud to be, be able to visit the Tuolton Veterans Memorial Plaza ATC. Thank you.
Chris Shabbat. Or anyone else? Got it? All right. Questions for Ross, Rich?
I guess to Mr. Shabbat's question, would the name Veterans Plaza, do you think that will affect our tourism as opposed to having the word memorial? I, I get the idea, I mean, we have almost sixty percent of people wanted that name. And I get that, to me, it's more inclusive. But do you think as what he's saying, will that limit people coming into our town for tourism?
So we don't, we don't have any data or didn't do any studies on the name and the impacts, potential impacts of visitation. But what I can tell you is that we are aware of other Veterans Plazas around the country. And, and you did mention sort of inclusivity. And that's, that's what we heard as people were describing this place, that a memorial essentially defined something as a place to honor those who have passed on. And a, a broader term to define this place or name this place as Veterans Plaza included everyone, including those people who have passed on and those who are still alive, those who are still serving, and those who maybe didn't actively serve, those who supported those who actively served. And so that, that's sort of a little bit of background as to, as to why and how, how we got to, to this, this name.
And is that something that's still been decided at this point or is that discussion ongoing or where are we at?
Yeah, so we, so we heard about the flags. We heard that certain flags should be flown. And then we would hear from someone else that other certain flags should be flown. And then we would hear from another person who said that other flags should be flown instead. And so it was very, became very apparent very quickly that, that defining the flags would, would leave groups out, would leave particular people's concerns about full representation out of this plaza. And so the, the concept came up to allow for a interchangeable basis essentially, to allow anyone to fly, to fly the flags for their particular activity or event. And so a good example of this is the Gold Star Mothers, that Gold Star Mothers or the VFW is another good example, who have their own flag. And so putting up certain flags now, so, but making them flexible allows anybody to set up whatever flags they want for their particular event.
I, I just want to say, I appreciate all the outreach you did on this and especially focusing on the veterans and listening to everybody's perspective to come up with the best.
Other questions?
I just have a comment a little bit on the, the name memorial. And I, I totally agree with you and the, I, I've worked in, in organizations where I have, we've worked with, I mean, multimillion dollar memorials or on, in honor of, and the, 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 the term memorial in, in, for us in, in this, when we, when we do these kinds of honoring whether a veteran or memorial or donor, whatever it is that we, I've done in the past. A memorial does mean someone who has passed, who has passed away. And so I am for like, I, I agree with the almost sixty percent of the preferred name, which is Veterans Plaza, because that would include even those who are still alive and who are, who have also passed away. And I also, I like the idea that during Memorial Day, we actually have a memorial event. So it would be, I would say like, I, I want to remember those who passed. But then we will not have like that specifically only for veterans that are alive, because we already have a memorial event going on in the city. So I, I'm with the name Veterans Plaza. And the studies have shown that people in their mind, they know what that means. If you put the word memorial, people automatically think of those who passed away just because of the term. The terminology does matter in this case.
Trying, trying to, if I could, if I could just add this thought based on what you had just said, Counselor. Flexibility, flexibility in, in the name, flexibility in flags, flexibility in the QR codes that will be displayed throughout the site, that, that the videos or the information that those QR codes connect to is flexible. And it can change over time. And it can highlight different veterans' experiences, perspectives. And, and so flexibility, I think would be the word I would throw out there.
Thank you.
Coach Sacco.
I'm sorry, there's this little gap and you may have addressed this. But on any given day, will the American flag be the only flag that's flying? I just want to make sure that we all understand. But then there are how many different flag poles available?
Yeah, so the American flag and the POW flag, POW MIA flag will fly on the flag pole permanently daily. And then the, the, the flexible flag poles that are around that reflection pool, I don't know the number off the top of my head, Rich knows, Rich and Nate know. They know the details of this and yeah, nine is the number. So, so nine, nine places to place flags.
And I just wanted to say thank you as well for all the outreach and engagement that has been done, which I started being involved in the very first meeting in twenty nineteen, I believe. And I think that, you know, there is a sensitivity around this topic for different people in our community. And it feels very inclusive. And I think it's a representation of all the outreach that you have done and listening to our community. And it feels like a gathering place for all from what we've seen on paper so far. So I really appreciate that sensitivity to our entire community because people have differing feelings about, about these topics. So I just really appreciate that.
Coach Brooks.
My first question is me, I didn't quite understand the introduction. Where are you from, Nate?
I'm from Portland.
No.
Shapiro did.
Yes, Shapiro did my landscape architect.
Project consultant facilitated, you know, did the technical research, all, all the design work.
Yeah, I'm not gonna come find you at home. I might have more questions. I'm not gonna go that far. Thank you for your work. And I think the drawings are amazing. And I have two, a couple of questions that came up in the presentation. One was, I heard somebody say, I didn't catch this before, is there artificial turf on the land?
Sure, I don't know, do you want to speak this or? Yeah, so the central kind of active space currently is shown as artificial turf. I'm sure more of these details will be developed as construction documentation for the project begins. But as schematic design level, we felt that that was a material that was durable, allowed people to have access and use it year round. Yes.
Well, I'm gonna stay curious about that one.
Okay.
And then, and think about what stirrup and can be green on your ground. And the other question was, I think that's all of my questions. I want to say also big kudos, it's, you know, I'm passionate about things, I would be up here. And I have like a favorite person that's my husband, and we don't agree on every single thing, right? But we agree enough. And there's a lot of details here, there's a lot of work that's gone into this. I don't anticipate that every single person's gonna be on the exact same page all the time. But what I do anticipate is that we're gonna have an amazing Veterans Memorial Plaza right here in the heart of our city, a place that our mayor has advocated for and that we can honor our mayor and other people that have served. And, and my father was one of those people. And, and, and just really give it the, the light that it deserves. So I just think the work is really good. I know what my other question was, it was about the lighting, those lights that go across. So I just want to be really clear that there's going to be ways that they downcast. So they're not gonna be shining up into the sky. We have a lot of people that are concerned about migratory birds and.
There's definitely fixtures and options out there that are dark stag and blind. So that's something that could be explored when the, the, the project moves into construction documentation and more of like the specifics and specifications of the project kind of develop a little further. But that's a, that's a great comment though, and yeah.
Yeah, no, I just appreciate every single detail. There's been such a thoughtfulness about this project. And it's something that really was initiated after I came on council, which is not all the things since I'm coming towards the end of my first term. So it's been really nice to watch this walk through and to have the bond discussion as well, to be able to come and see this to fruition. When in the beginning, when we were talking about it, a lot of people discussed it as if it were a pipe dream. So thank you for all your hard work and dedication and incredible community outreach. We wouldn't have these concerns and down to the spine of a detail if it wasn't for the conversations happening. And whenever a conversation happens, there's an opportunity to agree or disagree. Thanks.
Other questions, comments?
I, I just wanted, I know Joe's probably listening in and he was such a big part of this and I just want to thank him too.
That's a good. Sure. Other questions? Just what I felt from Mr. Shabbat's comments about the branch insignia, their emblems, that I remember in the design document somewhere on that, I'm gonna call it rock, on the rock, are gonna be the emblems of the, of branches of the military.
Yeah, there's seven emblems proposed on stone pillars throughout the central core space.
You know, tying into Mr. Shabbat's point, anyway, they've kind of lit at night, just an idea.
There's always potential for that, yeah.
So because that would be, you know, with the flag and then seeing the seven branches, kind of nice. You know, kind of, there's a needle, if you will, there's no flags, but you can see the emblems, so they're firmly affixed there. Right? Any other questions? So with that.
To approve consideration or approve to, move to approve resolution number five, six, three, five, twenty-two, accepting the City of Tuolton Veterans Plaza Plan and Design Report.
I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution five, six, three, five dash twenty-two, accepting the City of Tuolton Veterans Plaza Plan and Design Report. Assuming this gets passed, then Council here, we have to figure out how we pay for it. All right, any discussions in those motions? This is a roll call votes for Council here. That's a Sacco, Council Brooks, Council President Crimes.
Aye.
I vote, I also, it's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, next up, item number three, consideration of ordinance number one, four, six, nine, dash twenty-two, creating Tuolton Municipal Code Chapter fourteen, dash one, nonprofit corporation low income housing tax exemptions. Don, for the third time tonight. I got to my check, this was. Thank you, Mr. Members of the Council. Again, I'm Don Hudson, the Assistant City Manager, and I'm here tonight to talk about orders one, four, six, nine, dash twenty-two, a nonprofit corporation low income housing tax exemption. If you remember back on April twenty-fifth, I presented in work session this concept and asked if the council was interested in me bringing back a, an ordinance to have this as part of our code. The direction was that I had to come back, so here I am. So ordinance from four, six, nine, dash twenty-two, if adopted, would allow for such an exemption under particular criteria. So the criteria that would be involved in this, first, the property must be owned by a tax exempt nonprofit organization under IRS Code five oh one, C, three or four. There are certain requirements that are related to the liquidation of assets if the corporation were to be dissolved. The property must be occupied by low income persons or held for future development as low income housing. In your ordinance, it shows that in the first year, the income levels need to be below sixty percent of the area median income. And after that, it's every subsequent consecutive year, it needs to be at eighty percent or lower. The property or portion must be actually used exclusively for those purposes that they are nonprofit. And then the exemption has to be approved by the city council. It would be, there is a application process that would need to be filed annually. You can see.
You can see the list of the items that are required as part of the application. When we would receive an application, within thirty days, we would be in front of your body to approve that exemption. And then if that is approved, we would certify the tax exemption with the county assessor's office. At that, I'll be happy to answer any questions about the ordinance that you have in front of you this evening.
House of Pratt.
What's the area median income? Approximately, is it in the seventy thousand?
I believe that sounds about right. I don't have it.
Oh. I was kind of curious.
Council Pratt.
Oh, sorry.
Well, it's, it's the exemption of the property itself. So it would be the owner of the property, so in this case, where this was brought to us by community partners for affordable housing. They are asking for an exemption to be in place for the property that they're purchasing. So it's a matter of the residents that are part of that process.
That's an apartment complex. We get only, we would only give percentage of those properties taxes.
If it's exempted, then we would not collect any revenue on that. And if there are agreement of more than fifty-one percent of the overlapping taxing districts, then all taxes of all overlapping districts would be exempt. Yes, if the city council were the only entity that were allowing the exemption, it would only be on the city's taxes. They would still be responsible for the other entities. We have heard that Tiger Twelton School District, TDFNR typically in support of these types of things. So I can anticipate that would be a problem, but they would have to have these things in place as well.
Council Red.
I'm curious and I don't know if you have this answer or maybe the organization that's going to be the five, one, two, three, or four. It's just dawn on me as I was in the city and just looking at different apartment complexes. I grew up in an area where there were a lot of different, not, different developments that were for, speak up. I grew up in an area where there are a lot of different low income housing for different families or even seniors. And I like to see, I thought about seniors and I, I thought of like, what if you're not a family of like, you know, but you're, you're a senior that are living on social security? Were they, are there, are there part of this? Can they apply for? Or because we sometimes focus on the school, that's how we base on how much income is in, in a family. But I'm thinking more like, like seniors that would, would there be a percentage for seniors, single seniors or maybe a couple who are seniors, but they're living on social security?
But this would only apply to an affordable housing project. And it would be the, the company, it has to be a nonprofit organization that owns it, that would be able to apply for this exemption. Individuals, there are some statewide property tax exemptions that, there are some for seniors. There's a long list of eligible, so they could potentially be eligible for a property tax exemption under some state statutes. And then would have to go through the county for that. That does not come through the city.
I, I'm just wondering if like, yeah, I just, I just, I was curious because I, I didn't understand the whole concept of it.
Yeah, this would just be for a project, it's a project owned by a nonprofit, specific nonprofit. And so that we have some apartment complexes that may be affordable housing, but if they're owned by a full profit organization, they would not qualify for the exemption.
But sometimes that, that organization will have like a percentage, say they're, they're a hundred apartment, apartments within the building, right? And then sixty will be for like families or like twenty will be for seniors. You know, they kind of divide that. So I was just curious if that's something that they put those kinds of guidelines or is that something that we can tell them, hey, you gotta provide some seniors or something for seniors in that housing? Or is that something?
Not under this ordinance, that would not be.
Thank you.
Other questions? House of Brooks.
Well, thank you for the work on this and I think it's good work. I'm curious about why there's a jump from sixty percent to eighty percent.
That's just part of, I believe it's part of the statutes and part of the, we base this off of counties, the county code and Hesbro's code. And that's the definition of low income that is part of the statutes and the code.
I'm still not clear, like sixty percent is part of the statutes of the code when it's being built?
That's half, the first year, they have to qualify under the sixty percent. It can then go up to eighty percent in subsequent years. So I, my purely assumption on it would be that as incomes increase, you know, even at that lower base, you're still qualifying. It's, if you've got some incomes that are increasing, you're not just all of a sudden wiping out the potential for the exemption. It's just the, the level to allow the continued exemption.
Okay, so I'm thinking of it backwards. So it's eighty percent of, sixty percent of, okay. All right. So you have, okay, so you have more increase. Okay, okay. So you're not going to get kicked out.
Correct.
And then I guess my other question, and I think it's really important too for our understanding for taxpayers and the things that we think about is, do we have statistics? Are there things that we think about for how much homelessness costs communities? Because we talk about, well, we're going to miss tax money. But I think that there is money that goes from communities to manage houselessness and homelessness in communities. All kinds of different ways that we spend money. And I'm just curious with Twelton. If we, you know, if there's ways that we spend money on people that are homeless right now.
We have not gone down to that level of.
Usually the county, that's county responsibility in the city. County, county health takes care of that.
We have police officers, we have, we have, we have cooling shelters. We have library services, we have meal services, we have, there's a whole bunch of people that use the, that go for meals on wheels and do the community things there. I've met people there. It was surprising to me the first time I was at the Meals on Wheels because I think, well, we're going to go to seniors. And then one of the first men that I sat next to was living in his car. And this was his meal for the day. I know that we've got over two hundred kids cited from the schools that are, that are housing insecure, homeless, that are sleeping on couches, that probably get school lunch programs and things like that. So I just think that there are a lot of costs. And also just keeping areas clean and clear. Because, you know, we know that there are different illnesses and diseases that can spread from living on the street that other people can catch. And those are some of my concerns around congregant settings and living on the streets. And I've been down to Nairobi to the second biggest slum in the world. And I know what it is when people are living in squalor. And so, you know, I just want to really recognize that we might not get this, this, this tax, this property tax from this one particular place, but that there are things that are expenditures that we as a community expend to take care of this problem that we have because people can't afford homes with their income. Even people that are working. I mean, it's kind of amazing how many people are housing insecure, professional people, police officers, all kinds of folks that people don't think about. So and the other one is that I think that these housing units will be filled up. One common conversation that I will have with people is this conversation that people want to be homeless. I know as a social worker that that's not true in the majority. We have wait lists for housing all over the city. We can't get people into housing. If people wanted to be homeless, there would be no wait lists for housing. So I want to be really clear about the serious nature that families, single mothers, kids are living without homes in the wealthiest country in the world. So I appreciate the work that you're doing. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Don, the only, I have a question about the three-year time limit is for land, when they're holding land in preparation of building.
Yeah.
But once it's built, it's permanent until it ceases operating?
Yeah, they would have to apply every year. But yes, if they, if it's not a purchase, if they have not built it yet, they have up to three years.
Because it does take about three years sometimes for these things to get built. It was time to buy the land. And I mean, it's been quite a long struggle for Sipa. Plantback Gardens, they bought that land quite a while ago. All right, right. And what if, say, are there possible exemptions, say, some paperwork snag and they're going through the process where it's three years fixed in stone? You're saying, could this be amended if something happened?
Issue, we could come back with a change to the ordinance. Because bureaucracy is bureaucracy.
And financing is, you know, multimillion dollar project is getting tougher and tougher. All right.
I'd like to move for a first reading by title only of ordinance number one, four, six, nine, dash twenty-two.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second to read by title only. Ordinance number, my computer, of course, just.
It's fourteen, sixty-nine.
Fourteen, sixty-nine, dash twenty-two. Thank you. Let me get, there we go. All right. That's, we'll call, I can't remember, is that we'll call our eyes and eyes. All those in favor by, by, others in favor of reading by title only, pushing my title, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Unanimous.
Ordinance number fourteen, sixty-nine, dash twenty-two, ordinance creating Twelton Municipal Code Chapter fourteen, dash one, nonprofit corporation low income housing tax exemptions.
I'll make a motion for a second reading by title only, ordinance number fourteen, sixteen, nine, dash twenty-two.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for second reading of ordinance, number one, four, six, nine, dash twenty-two. Any discussion on the motions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Unanimous?
Ordinance number fourteen, sixty-nine, dash twenty-two, and ordinance creating Twelton Municipal Code Chapter fourteen, dash one, nonprofit corporation low income housing tax exemptions.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number one, four, six, nine, dash twenty-two, creating Twelton Municipal Code Chapter fourteen, dash one, nonprofit corporation low income housing tax exemptions.
I have a motion and second to adopt ordinance number one, four, six, nine, dash twenty-two, create Twelton Municipal Code Chapter fourteen, dash one, nonprofit corporation low income housing tax exemption. Any discussions in those motions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimously adopted. All right.
Thank you, Don.
Next item on our general business is the twenty twenty-three legislative agenda for the week of Oregon cities. I think this is Sharon?
Yes. Well, it should be made, but she's on our backpack and somewhere high in the associate delegated. Over the last few months, policy committees comprised of city staff and elected officials, one of the committees was led by our own city manager, Don Hudson, met from across the state to review issues and develop policy priorities for the upcoming legislative session. The executive team met and discussed all twenty-nine of the items that the policy committees brought forward. It was really hard to narrow down, down from the twenty-nine and argue, argument could be made for many of them to include on our list. In reality, many of these were worked on by the league, whether they are at the top of the list or not. We looked at the highest impact and relevancy to Twelton and ended up with five. And I'll just run through those really quickly. The first one, we are suggesting and recommending that be on our list is the addressing the measure one, ten shortcomings. The legislative recommendation is to restore criminal justice incentives for seeking treatment for addiction while ensuring a path for expansion for successfully completing the treatment program. The second one we are recommending is adequate funding for state climate initiatives. And the legislative recommendation of that is to support legislation to streamline processes and fully fund the implementation of climate mandates. And also support legislation that allows the state to adequately maintain and staff programs that impact the city's ability to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. The third one that we are recommending be on our list is cybersecurity and privacy. The recommendation there is that the league will support legislation that addresses privacy and cybersecurity for all that use technology, including but not limited to funding for government cybersecurity initiatives, statewide resources for cyber professionals, regulations of data privacy or standards for software and hardware developers to meet, to make their products more secure. And another one is infrastructure financing and resilience. So the recommendation is to advocate for an increase in states' investment in key infrastructure funding sources. And finally, the marijuana tax on.
Now you talked about one.
So marijuana taxes and the recommendation is to advocate for increased revenues from marijuana taxes. This may include proposals to restore state marijuana tax losses related to measure one, ten, distribution changes and to increase the current three percent cap on local marijuana taxes. Some local voters may choose to rate their reflects the needs that are needed. Turn it over to you to talk about and we're happy to change those and then send in our ballot. It's the revised timeline, it's due by August nineteenth. So yeah.
Special. House Brooks.
Okay, so for number one, one, ten, are you suggesting that money be diverted from recovery services back to criminal, partisan, taking money away from treatment?
No, I don't believe that is the legislative recommendation. It's, I believe the recommendation that the league is going for is to restore the incentives to go to treatment. Because right now there is no incentive, it's just a ticket and there's no incentive to go to treatment. And so it's not taking away any of the funding. It is to, that you would actually have to pay the ticket or go to, or go to treatment. Because right now, they're going to treatment and they're not going to take.
Yeah, but I understand, what I understand, there's a gap in service providers is part of the reason why people aren't going to treatment, not because they're not getting tickets. So I have a, I have an issue with this one. I'm not in support of that. I'm just going to say that out here. And I think that this program needs to have time to get on its feet. And I'm also curious around support around, if there was any of these legislative priorities that were focused on the housing bond and helping stand that up while there are gaps are also in process with the lack of social workers in our community here. We have a real hard time retaining social workers in the state. And there's a lot of policy reasons for that. It's a hard place to practice. So I was just curious if there's anything on. Well, it's housing, but there's the implementation of the, of the housing plan that was, you know, this being advocated for by here, here together, Metro Housing Bond.
That's local, that's not statewide. This is statewide initiative at the legislature.
Yeah, but isn't there something for housing statewide?
No.
Anyway, if there's anything for housing statewide, I'd be interested in that.
Look, God.
Is there a list?
Look, there's the additional three, almost this is in there.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm interested in. I'm interested in. That's what I'm, that's what I'm interested, I'm interested in homeless.
Yeah, because there's the five, plus the additional three. Yeah, there's five and three that you had, you wanted to have add, because we don't have to blimmer ourselves to five.
Yeah, I'm interested in water. And the housing, and I'm interested in taking off the one-ten.
Okay. Comments? Councilor Sacco?
I'm interested in keeping the one-ten. And for, for the reasons that are stated in the document is that people are not, there are people that are not seeking treatment because there are no, yes, there are, there are issues with, with, with access and, and treatment centers, absolutely. And there's waiting lists, I know there's a, I mean, there's a huge issue. But there's, you know, as stated here, there's increase in property crime as it relates to drug abuse. There is increase in people dying due to drug abuse, and so, you know, some people won't seek treatment unless there are, there are consequences. So I would be interested in, in keeping one-ten on.
Okay.
Can I respond to that? From what I understand, the, the fact that there wasn't a place to place people is part of the reason of the decision-making around law enforcement of not, of not making charges. So I think that it's kind of cart before the horse, and it's a way of punishing people for not having the treatment services available that they need. I don't, well, anyway, that's the difference that I see, so I just disagree. And I think that the, the way that I am reading it, and Sherlin, you can tell me if I'm, if I'm wrong, is that they have a, I mean, they have a choice. They can choose the ticket, pay the hundred dollar ticket, or go to treatment. And so, but I don't think they're going to be punished if there are no, I don't think they're going to be punished if there are no treatment.
Chief Pickering is very.
Treatment available.
Yeah. Yes, please.
So I would agree, there is a, a true lack of services for individuals suffering from addiction. But we actually are hearing from those that we contact that there's no incentive. Then we've, we've had stories from addicts who have said, I used to have this time where a judge would send me to treatment for thirty or sixty, ninety days, and I would leave, I would leave the lifestyle for a little bit. Those options are no longer on the table because there's no place for them to go. There's no treatment, but, but even court-appointed or, or there's no court-appointed treatment, and there's no elective treatment. So the, the ability for, you know, an individual suffering from an addiction that, you know, at any time is, is really left in this stuff between a rock and a hard place, really. And the, the fact that there's no backside to the citation, so if an officer comes in contact, issues the hundred dollar citation, if they fail to appear for the citation, there's no, well-known documentation or follow-through from the courts or even from the addiction side. If they do show up and pay the hundred dollars, there's no requirement for them to make the phone call. If they make the phone call, there's no requirement for you to follow up after that. So I believe the intention of measure one-ten is, is right and is just, but the, the infrastructure and the backbone to the ordinance and to the law and to the infrastructure of the law is not in place yet. And so I believe the, the league's intention in, in this is to really start to push those drivers to make this, this law what it's intended to be. And so I think there needs to be more work at the state level, including the local and regional levels, but there, there needs to be more work at the state level to get this refined, to be an effective program.
Yeah, what's deeply concerning to me is that they closed on the Washington County Treatment Dorm, which was something that you could funnel people right to. And so there was an opportunity if you were incarcerated to go to treatment, and they no longer have that. And then there is a lack of ability to go into treatment. So you've got someone that, that could have been sent to the treatment dorm, that is not going to be getting treatment, but that can catch charges. And as people get more and more charges, they become less and less employable, they have more and more barriers to their lives, they're already dealing oftentimes with poverty and serious problems, mental, physical, emotional wellbeing, and spiritual wellbeing, community wellbeing. And then you have more hoops for them to climb into and overcome. If, if the programs were set up, I would have no problem with this. But with the programs not being set up, it's the wrong way around. You don't treat sick people by making it harder for them to get better. And that was the intention of, that the voters voted on, in my opinion, for one-ten, is to try to make access to treatment and getting well a reality, and to shift the thought that addiction is a crime versus an illness and a disease. So I, I'm not going to shift on that for myself, but other people can have their own opinions.
Counselors present crimes.
Thanks. I completely hear what you're saying, I really do, and I, I agree with a lot of it because I think that the resources just aren't there. But I do think that the backend of one-ten does need a lot of work, because I think, as you've shared, I think on at least two occasions, for the law enforcement partners, it's very cumbersome, it's very difficult, and not to paraphrase what you were saying, but in essence, it felt like you officers were seeing people multiple times, and there's no ability to help, there's no resolution. And so I, I would like to keep one-ten in there if we could, because I do feel like it needs some more work, and that's a state-level problem because it was state-level.
Yeah, I just feel like there's so many choices, and this one is not a winner for me, so.
Counselor Pratt, to catch a rest.
Well, my first question, I guess, well, one thing I want to mention in here is it does say, part of what they are talking about is ensuring a path for expungement for successfully completing a treatment program. So what would happen at this point, though, when you don't have, I, I totally get the idea of you want to have a way to make this accountable and get these people into treatment, but when there's not treatment, then what happens to these people when there's nowhere for them to go? What, what would happen now, for example, if you don't have this treatment center in Washington?
Well, and I think the, I think that's kind of the, the root of the issue is that, that there's really nothing that happens now. So they issued a citation, and there's the, the way that the law is written, there is no enforceable actions if they don't show up for their citation, there's no enforceable actions if they don't make the phone call to receive the, and it's not treatment, it's drug assessment. So the phone call that they're required to make per the law is for a drug assessment. So it's, and then there's no, there's no real way or no push to get them into treatment. So the phone call is really just for them to talk to a counselor or to an addiction specialist about the fact that they were issued a citation, and they were, you know. And again, I can say, again, from, from our side of the, of the coin, and that's, that's what I can speak to, is, you know, we, we provided one phone number. So any, any contact or interaction that we have with someone who's struggling with addiction that may be in possession of a controlled substance, we get, we have one card that was given to us by the state that says, here's the one phone number that you can call. So there's not, again, the, the backbone of the, of the other side of this is just not in place where we can be, really make any difference at this point. And I think that's, that, that, you know, I would agree that this is a process of trying to get people help that they need and deserve, but there's just, it's just not set up in that way, and I think it's going to be a, a state issue, you know, and, and incumbent on the state to get the work done on the backend so that it, it is an effective program.
Problem is, is I don't know what the league of cities is really trying to accomplish here, like, are they trying to make, I mean, what's the, I get the whole idea of helping to push people into this, but if there's nowhere to push them into to get help, then it's a big natural.
Well, also, might I suggest that this is a lot of conversation about something that we have very little.
Totally correct there, yeah.
So what I hear from legislators, you probably heard this also, is measure one-ten was passed by a ballot initiative, not by the legislature. So the legislature had to enact a whole bunch of laws quickly, then pass it over to OHA, who had to do things quickly, and OHA didn't have enough time. So this is not done correctly, this is not done totally. So what this is trying to do is push the legislature to do their job, finish what they started, enforce OHA to enable those regulations to make this program that we all want.
Right.
If we don't do it, the legislature is going to ignore this, because there's also the people thinking, measure one-ten is not a permanent law. It's only funded for so many years, and it can disappear. So you might have legislators who are going to be like, out of mind, you know, out of sight of their mind.
Yeah, let it.
Where, but no, if, if, if we want this to help people, you got to push the legislature, say, finish what you did, enact the rules legislatively versus through ballot type, you know, ballot title, and get OHA off the dime and roll these, these programs off. That's my two cents.
I will say.
That's right.
Thank you very much, thank you for this. I, I also, I mean, I'm in favor of keeping it because someone who has been recovered and lived with someone who was fifteen years in addiction, and it was really hard for the family to work with, to have an individual that has had addictions more than the addict himself or herself. And the way we were able, in those neighborhoods where I grew up, to help the family, we almost had to remove the person with the addiction so we could help the family who was devastated. And in some cases, when the addict would come back, would say something like, thank you for doing that, because I, I, that was my cry for help. And so I think that we're not, I saw that a hundred times, I mean, in my neighborhood, you cannot imagine. And I feel like if we want to help people, we need to, if it was something that was a shortcut even in this measure, and we really want to help people, then we really need to do it the right way and provide those services for them, including the families, because that, those are the ones that suffer the most. They're the ones that are being robbed, stolen, I mean, they take their things, everything, they sell it, they pound it, and then they use their drugs, and then they have no food, they have, I, I mean, I saw it. So I really want support and help so that this can be, this can actually help people the way it was intended to be. And I, I'm one of those who supported it, and I, I'm hoping that it can be done the right way, so, you know, people are asking for help in a weird way, and we just don't understand it, and I think this would be very helpful.
Questions, comments? That's all here.
I'm in, I'm in favor of keeping measure one-ten for a lot of the same reasons, but also I hear from officers around the state that they don't even write the tickets now. So the opportunity, because it's like, there are a lot of levers that have been taken away from our law enforcement to help people, and I feel like this is an opportunity that could put some teeth behind that to get people to engage. And I do know from, at the state level, they're trying really hard to get this moved forward, and the treatment centers open, I know four D is open, I mean, there are a variety of new treatment centers that are opening. Unfortunately, they're not local here in Washington County, but there's a huge full-court press for preventionists, from all sorts of people across the state that are pushing, and I think if we could do something in parallel with that, again, I get that our vote is, is in school, but I am definitely in favor of keeping.
With that, are we majority in favor of, I would say move all seven, what the heck? Oh, no, all eight.
I'd like to add all those climate ones and the water infrastructure ones. And the housing.
Housing's in there.
Yeah, so that, there, besides the five, there, the infrastructure funding to support the housing.
Yes.
Yep. Yep. Okay.
I'd like the building decarbonization, efficiency and modernization. It was very interesting to me that we have more off-gassing from our buildings here in Twelton than we have from our traffic jam.
Yeah, I would like.
That was fascinating.
Okay.
The one that talks about investments into renewable energy, I think that's really important, and community climate planning resources, especially with the new federal bill that's going to pass. This could be a really nice lift for us to get more funding to help be cleaner and greener. And then the water, the place-based water resource planning and water utility rate funding assistance, all the water.
And you pretty much have half the list.
No, it's not. But it's, it's some of, those, those are really important things, we're going to have issues with water. Place-based water resource planning, it's important.
Yeah, the top five. So we'll go with the top five that staff selected.
I'm for that.
Then we can add, you know, we have the three here.
Yeah, definitely the building decarbonization. I would like that, yeah.
Because remember, this is, realistically, LLC is not going to spend all this time on this, just hope you know, because what's going to happen when the legislature session starts, they're going to decide what the agenda is, the LLC.
I know, but we include what our concerns are here.
Right. And I, I'd rather see something that we're unanimous on than something that some of us don't agree about.
All right.
On our priorities.
All right. So what do you want to add?
I would like to add the, the decarbonization efficiency and modernization.
Okay. To get the decarbonization in there? So we got nine? Okay.
Include that in the five, or include that in?
No, include that in the five.
And the additions. Is what the majority is saying.
I know, I think if we have more than, is there something that all of us can vote on that we agree on? Because measure one-ten, I don't agree with that one, but if there's something that's unanimous, maybe everybody agrees on carbon, that we could have one that we all agree on.
It's, I, I heard strongly from some folks, they are very strongly in favor of measure one-ten being on the list.
There's all, all these, and I'm very strongly not in favor.
Counselor Sacco?
Well, I think that it looks like, and Sherlin, tell me if I'm wrong, that these were distributed amongst the bigger headers. So it looks like, is that kind of, was that part of the thinking behind it, or no?
It wasn't, but it did end up that way.
Okay, because my concern is, like, I think we're all very passionate about energy and the environment and, and water and all of those things. But it seems like there should maybe be a broader distribution as well.
Well, then housing. You know, there's local funding to address homelessness, there's nothing in that checkbox area there, we could use that for dispersal. Maybe all of us could agree on the homelessness one and have that be in the prioritized one.
I'd recommend taking marijuana tax off that instead.
I mean, I would like to see something that we're unanimous about, like all of our lists for the council to be unanimous about, and I want to agree with that, and I totally get that the police are in a tough position on this, and I agree. And I also think they're resourced, and a lot of people that are dealing with addiction are not.
So I've got one motion to remove marijuana taxes from the list, and a motion to remove the addressed measure one-ten shortcomings, and to add the climate. It's getting harder, this is.
I would say, take these two that are controversial and put them, just leave them on the additional list, and then add two different ones in the top five that we can all agree on. Can we agree on the homelessness one?
Uh.
I like one-ten. I, I'm sorry, I, I know we're not going to get anything anonymous, it's not going to be an anonymous vote, but I think that if we, I, I'm okay with the tax, and then marijuana tax and adding the decarbonization one that you were talking about. But I think the one-ten is important because I really read, I've read that one really, you know, not just right now, but when it came on the ballot, so I feel like I'm strong. I think that what they suggested, the state and the staff suggested is good, but we're going to remove one from the five, then we'll remove the marijuana tax.
But that's advocating for just, it's not about marijuana, it's about getting more revenue.
Yeah, it's about getting more money.
I trust the staff, so just so you know.
Yeah, I know, it's one or the other, I know.
All right, so what about, I mean, because we kind of. All right, so what about, I mean, cuz we kinda glossed over the cybersecurity and privacy.
That's pretty important.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
You know. Yeah. But is that more important than?
Homelessness.
Than supporting needed housing?
No.
I was I was gonna suggest slipping the two or taking that off and putting the carbon thing that you'd like.
I I'm lost at where we're at, cuz are we taking?
I'm sure about five marijuana tax that people do and don't.
Right. I I I agree, Counselor, this is not gonna be unanimous then.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be unanimous, this is a recommendation, L C. Well, I I agree, Counselor Brooks, we could add the.
I just don't, I just, and I don't see why there's ones that we can't have that we all agree on. If there's this huge list and we have additional recommendations, why we can't have the additional recommendation be measure one ten? The majority of the people want it, but not everybody. And then have one that we can all agree on be on the major um recommendation. Because.
Put them down to additional and add two more to the top.
That we can all agree on. And we try really hard to be agreeable, and tonight we've agreed on so much.
So move marijuana tax down to the, not in the top five.
Yeah.
Put housing up there in the top five.
Yeah.
And then marijuana is down in here and we throw in the carbon, right?
The carbon and put measure one ten down in the recommendations.
That's, you don't have the votes for that. You don't.
Well, Frank, aren't there everyone agreeing on some and not everyone agreeing on others? Isn't there a way of trying to be um?
Here's how we can do this, Sherilyn, is this a bulleted list, priority list, if you're just a list? How's it presented, L C?
We fill out the ballot with five check marks and then we can add at the bottom of of this. That we think that they overbooked or that we wanted to add, add to. But we fill out the ballot with five check marks.
And then a couple runner runners up first.
Add additional comments.
Last two are bond measures, we blasted something.
I know, it's like.
Well, and I'm helping, I think we should give consideration for staff colleagues that can deal with.
Yeah.
Yeah, they had, that they brought their fight forward.
We probably spent thirty minutes on it. We we went it down, people put them up there, we talked about it, then we we went it down. Again, we we took it into consideration that there's a hundred and somewhat cities in Oregon that are doing the same thing. Word will take it and just and that they'll they'll bring forward what they think are the highest legislative priorities. And a number of these are gonna be worked on, whether they're they're legislative priorities.
So how about this? So one ten goes to the secondary list, power taxes go to secondary list, housing goes up. Uh, what's it, carbon?
Yeah.
Goes up, and then we have a total of nine.
Thank you.
But they're all there.
Yeah.
No, but I want them in the five priorities.
Yeah.
The five priorities are the ones that I'm more likely, I'm thinking that they're gonna pay attention to. The other ones, they're gonna see if other, what?
The other cities that want it, it's just a matter of.
I want that though, I want it to be there. What's wrong with that?
No, what's wrong with having everybody agree on the ones that are the priority instead of just being some counselors that want that, not all.
The majority of us want it there. That's the thing.
There's more, we, all of us want some of them.
Uh, but I don't.
I I mean, to me, I'm I'm okay with the, I I would add the, my opinion is to add carbon on the on the four. Uh, you know, onto the third one, on the, yeah, you got the five here, with put cybersecurity down in the bottom list. And put carbon in place of cybersecurity. And does that meet everybody's?
So it would leave the the original five that staff recommended.
Yeah, just.
Would be there, we would just take cybersecurity from that five, put it into the runner up.
And then carbon goes.
And carbon goes up.
Goes in.
Yes. In, sorry.
And what about housing?
Housing's there.
Okay, cool.
Infrastructure funding for support needed housing, so it's always been there.
But one ten's and one ten stays in the five. Right? Is that what you're saying? Cuz that's.
I just said cybersecurity becomes carbon, cybersecurity goes to bottom.
Right.
And then that's it.
Terrifying.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, so the ones that are on the ballot that we will mark are. Address one ten shortcomings, adequate funding for state climate initiatives. Building decarbonization efficiency and modernization, climate initiatives, marijuana taxes, infrastructure financing. And then in our additional comments, we will have cybersecurity and privacy. Turn to work property tax.
And infrastructure funding. Yes. Comes up?
Yep, I'm gonna say, I still say, I've worked in the treatment dorm, it closed it down in Washington County. I've worked with people in recovery for over almost thirty years. I've had my own personal experiences with this. And um I think it's a terrible idea, and I think that it's, it's just terrible idea. And the fact that we can't do ones that we all agree on, and especially when there's more than one, just for your own personal things. I'll remember that.
Okay.
I'll remember it. I'll remember it. That's it.
Let's move on, uh, Charlie, get your direction.
Yep.
All right, so next up is, we had no items removing consent. So back up. PDF is crashing. Uh, so we have the council roundtable, cuz we didn't have it before, so we'll start with Counselor Hillier.
Okay, well, I'm gonna combine a, went to C four Metro meeting where, actually, they they asked them to do modeling. Cuz everybody wanted to know where they got this information about Tolly, and they did this in, yeah, it was only an engineer would understand. It was not what was asked for, so that was kind of interesting. But at the C four meeting, um, we talked about um. That amendment that we sent the letter asking for an extension of time. We had a really lengthy discussion about the issues. They did move it till September fifteenth. And so bottom line is that um C four is gonna come up with a letter by September first. And then it will be, we can um also send it in if we'd like with the concerns about it. A lot of it has to do with mitigation, but the one thing we did find out that was new to me is that um the mitigation projects, because of diversion. Cuz there's a line in there that is within one mile and same direction, and people were pretty upset about that. But that, we were told that the um, the NEPA process, which is the environmental study, will drive, determine the. The prioritized mitigation projects, but it's, they have a graph and it's like a waterfall. So the the ones that the NEPA process identifies will get, they're towards the top of the funding pile. And then the other ones are like towards the bottom. And who knows what the NEPA process. And then um. Oh, I went to um Clackamas County Business Alliance and it was Metro talking about the. Frank's laughing. Um, Tigerd wants to add some land into the U G B. The urban growth boundary, and to do that, Metro saying someone else has to take land out of the urban growth boundary and.
Give it up.
Um, that's quite contentious, and it's something that Metro will be deciding within the, by the end of the year, they're hoping. So leave it at that, cuz it's interesting. And then, oh, Friday, I went to concerts in the park and I saw some other counselors there. And Radical Revolution was there and it was really fun.
That's right.
Um, nothing really official, but we did have our first uh, Betsy, Jonathan. And uh someone from um, you know, a company, we had our first kind of Latino business meeting on Thursday. And it was pretty great. We had a, can't remember how many, but I think forty people were there. And um these were all businesses that are trying to, you know, they they're just kinda getting to know a little bit more about the city. And they're from our community, and we we have other people from Tiger and we have people from Portland. But it was really good to um talk about um just just resources that they have. And our presentation was focused on the climate action plan that we have um, that we're working on. And so it was really good to see Ezo Marketing um tell us a little bit of what they've done so far. Where they, where the communities that they've reached out to. And so it was kinda like a uh really good startup, a startup meeting for a startup, startup group. For uh businesses in Twalatin that are targeted to like minorities or Hispanics or Spanish speaking. And so, yeah, that was, that was really good. Um, it's gonna be every Thursday, every first Thursday of the month. And like I said, last week was our first month and our first meeting, and it was really good. It's um, it's called Cafe Comba, which means coffee and bread. Um, it's a kind of tradition that a lot of Latinos are familiar with to start off their day. Um, so that was good, and that was, that was all I thought, so.
Counselor Saka.
I don't have anything.
Right, Counselor Brooks.
Um, on the. Attended virtually the Building Bridges um seminar that is through. For about housing. I was also in attendance for um planning and was approached. Um, with my T U S on hat to be join here together. Which started off as Metro Housing Bond and now is sort of a watchdog for it. I attended the B City Seminar. Um, I actually joined with the Service Department and watched it together with our Service Department. Down at this, here at the Service Center Building. Um, and they talked about pesticide, integrated pest, integrated pest management. Which was very interesting, and I. Met with the Twelton River Keepers leadership around some um. Planning and grant opportunities with my um Twelton Sustainability Network hat on, but there's things that will affect our city possibly. Um, and let's see. Into. Here. Um. I went to the kids, Washington County Kids um event fundraiser for Katie Riley's organization. It was very nice over at Winery out in Forest Grove. Um, and then did the. Wayne Morris Dinner, which. There was great guest speakers and the last um speak. Um, presentation by um our outgoing Congressman. Okay, I think of his name right now, that is all the transportation.
DeFazio.
DeFazio, who gave a wonderful, wonderful speech. And just to mention, I I remember meeting him the first time and he was mentoring um the gal that became land. Our Department of the Interior Native American woman and um how ni- very nice he was to me. Um, and then this coming week, I'll be doing the PAB. And I'll be um, I'm the vice chair and the chair will be, Gon's will be the first one who's chairing the PAB. So I'll be meeting with Johnny beforehand, which is really nice since she's on her way to retirement. I feel like there was another thing, but I can't find it right now, so that's, oh. Well, the wonderful concerts in the park and they've just been doing a great job. And then the new, um, it's good to check out tomorrow morning, it'll be the new registration for adult activities. Through the One Need a Poll Center, and um remember the Earthwise Crew, we're partnering with that, which is really great with the Twelton Sustainability Network. And but there's also all the other things to sign up for. I do yoga and water aerobics. And most of the Earthwise Crew things and the concerts in the park have been phenomenal. And I've had a lot of fun painting bees on people's faces and um just having a good time with our community. Thanks.
President Grant.
I haven't had any meetings since our last meeting.
Right, uh, just a few things, the Metro Mayor's Consortium had a really good uh so presenters. Uh, laying out the psilocybin rollout uh in the state. Uh, you might saw Washington County backed off, they didn't pass the resolution. But once you really get to the details of this, this has been pretty, uh, since it's medicinal use only. Uh, the people who are providing the the services have to go through a hundred sixty hours of training. That's a facilities are a certain way, they're gonna be, as far as siding, it's gonna follow the same siding rules as a marijuana facility. Um, my concern was grow facilities and pro- for this experts. Um, if the state has five one thousand square foot growing facilities, that's about all you need for the whole state for mushrooms. So I don't think it's gonna be the issue, I think that's why Washington County backed off, that it's good, that would be an issue. Uh, one of their suggestions was, if you do see it becoming an issue, easiest way to address it is through changing your marijuana organs. And put on the psilocybin under it. So if it does become an issue, that's how we can react to it quickly. Um, I got uh, so Westside Economic Alliance is going to announce a new C E O in the coming days. Uh, she will start on Monday, so keep tuned on who they selected. Um, and then Washington County, uh, this is really politically wonky. Washington County's got through reapportionment, so based on the census, the commissioners' land, if you will, that districts are changing. Uh, ours isn't changed that much, but other districts are, especially around Beaverton and Aloha. Um, so they're still working out those details of who's gonna be where, it's usually, it's not the cities. It's those uh unincorporated parts of Washington County where they're gonna fit into uh the new maps and what commission will be responsible for them. Uh, as of looking right now, we're still gonna be in Commissioner Rogers District, so we're not going anywhere. Um, and then finally, on August twenty fourth is the first meeting of the new Regional Total Advisory Committee. At ODOT's headquarters in Portland on Flanders, um where most ODOT employees won't even visit anymore, but that's where the meeting is. Um, about, I said about thirty-five agencies, and I'm there representing the Washington County Coordinating Committee. Um, is from nine to eleven thirty. Uh, it's gonna be the kickoff, they're actually hiring facilitators for this. They have a feeling they know how this is gonna go. All right, and then finally, um, we have executive session scheduled right now on Wednesday at five o'clock. Hopefully you all can attend, we're gonna be discussing some legislative possibility, uh, let's say, uh, what do you call them, that legislative? Legal action, uh, that might be pending, so um if you can make it by phone, uh, it's gonna be a Zoom meeting, correct? Yep. Yeah.
I can't go.
Okay, this should be fairly short, I'm not visioning more than forty-five minutes. There's voting, yeah.
It's Wednesday.
Wednesday.
It should be a time that everyone can.
So five o'clock, Wednesday?
Bridgette can't.
I can't make it.
Counselor Brooks can't make it.
So I guess it doesn't matter, right?
No, it's because we have to make a decision quickly based on the timeline set by the state. Can't, we can't wait.
Are there alternate days this week?
What about Friday?
The lawyers can only do it certain days.
Oh, and they gave us Wednesday and that's it?
They gave us Wednesday and Thursday, Counselor Brooks couldn't make Thursday.
Oh, geez, okay, well, there you go.
So at least four of us can make it on Wednesday, all right.
I could do the virtual, right?
Virtual.
What time on Thursday?
No, you changed it for, you said you couldn't.
I know, but I could, I'm looking at, if there's a phone option, I could do Thursday.
Or it would be phone Zoom, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What about Thursday, guys? If we could go back to Thursday, would that be available? Cuz I can do Thursday.
I can do remotely on Thurs- Thursdays.
So five o'clock on the eleventh, Thursday's better for folks?
How long?
Thirty minutes, forty-five minutes? Again, it's on Zoom, we're not meeting in person.
Yeah, that works fine for me if we need to.
Yeah.
I can do.
I can do either day, so I'm two thumbs.
So Thursday, we're going back to Thursday at 5:00. All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Have a good evening.